Thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. We've got Pastor Carmen Detwiler from Bethel Mennonite Church for our opening prayer. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. Father, and haven't we come to you this morning? And we're thankful for this day that you've created. We thank you for the rain to replenish your earth. And, Lord, I thank you for this commissioner meeting, Lord, these people that have designated their time to look after the things of this county, whether to take care of us, to make life better and to prosper this community. Lord, I pray that you just give them wisdom this morning, pray with each person that's represented here. We just pray that you would just help us to be a people that could bring honor and glory to you in all that we do, even here at a meeting. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay. Morning, Dale.
First off, we had the executive meeting on January the ninth. And, boy, the best of me, I'm trying to recall what that was.
Courthouse, wasn't it? Blaming the courthouse.
Was it? Okay. Boy, I tell you what, it's a total, I need you. So Grant is not here.
Contracts wasn't up to the courthouse?
No.
You may have the wrong date.
As I say, in my mind, it's just...
I'm trying to find that.
Because I don't recall.
It was, I mean, the meeting went on based off of what was advertised, and if there would be any questions, it was to be, reach out to Grant in regards to that meeting.
Okay.
It was our pending, or written.
With Sheriff's Department.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And next up, they've got meeting minutes from January ninth. Gentlemen, are there any changes or revisions?
That's all, man.
So, man.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting, or motion passes three zero. There was no highway meeting this morning. Next up, we got the Highway Department. Morning, Chris.
Morning, Chris.
Morning. I do got some packets I'll give to you guys, just to do a little report. We are going to do the state of the county again in February when you do that. So when I first started gathering this information, I was kind of gathering it in that kind of a form, a little bit broader spectrum, but to present some of it here today, I just present some of the tasks that we do on a yearly basis for the Highway Department. And Stephanie had asked me for documents, but I didn't get them done until this morning, so I just printed them.
Right.
I gave them to you guys too early, and you didn't study them and ask me too many questions.
Two pledges. Thanks, Chris.
You're learning. So this is just a rough draft, everything in there. There's some things that aren't quite finalized, and I'm going to finalize and go through, but I was just getting information ready, in case we have the state of the county address, stuff for that. But some of the things I wanted to touch on a little bit is a little bit of what we do on a yearly basis, as far as if you want to classify it in production, because when people look at our budgets and stuff, everybody wants to know what they're getting for their money. So I tried to put a little bit of that stuff into, on paper here. So out of the, basically, 780 miles of road that we have in the county, we have 278 miles of that is asphalt, 60 miles of that is chip and seal, 3 miles of that, or 2 and 1/2 miles of that is a composite, 18 miles of that is concrete, and total, we have 359 total miles of hard surface road, which is 46 percent of our roads. That's based on the overall 779 miles of road. 379 miles of that road is gravel, which is 48 percent, and we've got 40 miles that are dirt roads and fair weather roads, or river bottom roads, and that's 5 percent. So basically, all that, 779 miles of road, that's 1,558 lane miles that we have to maintain, lane miles of ditches and right-of-way, and culverts, and everything goes along with that, mowing, brushing. And our PESA rating, which is a pavement surface evaluation rating system that LTAP uses, and other states actually use that PESA rating to rate your roads and your infrastructure and their condition, and then from them ratings, it goes 1 to 10, with 10 being the best. And it tells you, based on your visual inspection, what you need to be doing to that road. So out of our 359 miles of hard surface road, we've got 8.7 miles, which is 2.45 percent of our roads are rated at 1 to 4 PESA rating. And 219 miles of our road is rated fair, which is a PESA rating of 5 through 7. 61 percent of our roads are in fair condition. Again, 2.5 percent of our roads are in poor condition. And we've got 130 mile of road that is PESA rating 8 to 9, which is 36 percent of our roads. So our average PESA rating, it's actually went down a little bit this year, is 7 percent, or 7.0, not 7 percent. And the average of the state is basically a 6. So we're still above the state average. We did some training with our guys with Rich and Jason and Troy. I got them guys some training the last couple of years, so they can go out and help evaluate the roads. And I turned, I actually turned them loose on the roads this year a little bit more. So being new at it, I think they were maybe even a little critical, but that was fine. I think usually our PESA ratings is 7.8. So we're still above average, doing good, but as I mentioned before, when we continue to build hard surface roads and use our dollars for that, which that's what we want to do, is shows by the first statistics I was giving you that we've got more gravel roads than hard surface roads, our, our overall condition of our existing roads will go down a little bit. Not to say that they're going to be bad, it still shows that 60 percent is in good condition, but they will go down as we get more miles to have to maintain. And some of the things that we, we did this year, just our general maintenance yearly stuff, our chip seal operations, we actually chip sealed 17.8 miles of road. We double chipped 7.3 miles of road. On our five-year road constructions, we chip sealed 6.87 miles of road. Our cost share chip seal, 1.23 miles of road. And we horse grooved chip sealed that buggy rut. We did 2.49 miles of road. So our total chip seal operations, we chip sealed 35.71 miles of road at $921,000. Paving operations, our paving was down a little bit this year from what we wanted to get. We overlaid 4 mile of road. We horse grooved 8 mile of road. And we did the CCMG paving up north, 8.36 miles of road. So our total paving operations, we affected 20.52 mile of road at $668,000. A couple other things we did on our new construction tile roads, where we just basically tiled our five-year road plan, was 10.96 mile of road that was tiled. Our cost share roads that were tiled was 2.77 miles. So our total tile operation was 13.73 mile of road that was tiled at $541,000. Our new construction operations, where we put the fabric down in the base, the rock and the calcium, we did five-year, was 5.83 mile, and our cost share was 1.21 miles. So our new construction base operation, 7 miles of road at $517,000. And the, last year's was down a little bit because we, what was it, we took a break at our five-year, so we kind of started late last year, came up with a new plan. But we're hoping to, we're hoping to tile 15 mile of road every year, which we were 14 mile this year. And then the following year, we're hoping to chip seal that 15 mile of road that we tiled the year before. Our pavement treatment, some of the other things that we did, our rejuvenator was 11.7 miles, 168,000. Our crack seal operations was 33 miles at 21,000. And just our pavement patching in general, patching potholes is $33,000. So total miles of road that we affected was 136 miles at $3,861,000. And I've, I've broken that down on some pages. And then I got comparison from the previous years, but that can be more stuff for, to get some averages and do it the state of the county address, I guess. A couple other things that we manage in, in the county is we got 126 bridges, 20-foot and over, in our inventory, 120 small structures, which is usually a concrete box, 4-foot to 20-foot in our inventory. We got 2,800 culverts, 12 inches to 60 inches in our inventory. We installed 44 of them culverts this year at $55,000. We installed two reinforced concrete boxes at $91,600. We installed one aluminum multiplate at $54,000. And we installed 79 drive culverts for people, which they pay for the culverts and the rock. We just do the installation. But just doing them, them pipes alone, the material only, was $200,000, just a little over $200,000. Which that doesn't include renting the crane, no manpower, no equipment, no labor to facilitate that. And since we're in winter operations here, I wanted to just kind of throw out a reminder, one more thing. We try to do a good job in the county and go out and make a difference. And I've said before, we do get compared to NDOT a lot on what we do or don't do, and how our roads look and don't look. So just a reminder, NDOT does have 29,000 total lane miles of road, as the county has 1,400 total lane miles of road. NDOT has 1,105 snow plows. The county has 14 total snow plows. That's eight trucks and six graders. Should be 10 trucks, but we actually, last year at this time, we had 10 trucks, we ordered 10 trucks. We've not got the two trucks, or we ordered two trucks. But the two trucks that we were using last year, we finally had to take them out of service. The frames are rotten on them, and the beds are bad. So we can't, they, they basically just sit right now. We can't put a snow plow on them and put a guy in them in them conditions and send them trucks out in the, in the snow with a load on them. They probably wouldn't make it. So NDOT has 2,000 drivers, we have 26 drivers. We don't have enough equipment for all of our drivers. NDOT basically takes care of 26 lane miles of responsibility for snow plow, and we basically cover 108 mile. So just kind of throw that out there when we, we don't get a lot of love with the, with the snow, but I do think that we've been doing a good job in taking care of that. There's other things that we helped facilitate this year, but that was just kind of a rundown on our normal maintenance stuff and the miles of road that we affect and do, and have a little bit of cost associated with that. And all them costs are material only.
Well, and just to give that some context, now, NDOT has their philosophy, they want black asphalt after a snowplow, so their philosophy is different than ours, but based off the lane miles of pavement, you know, we would need 42 snow plows instead of 14 in order to maintain NDOT-like road.
Right.
Good, thank you.
Right, and we don't use pure salt either. I think they use pure salt, but hopefully with the storage of the salt building next year, we'll be able to use more salt than we do, but I don't think that we ever really want to go to the salt only.
Salt, yeah.
You can't see where it's at, and the, the sand helps knock down the bounce and scatter of the salt, keeps it on the road instead of in the ditches. Another thing I was going to bring up with, with a little bit of that is our, our blacktopping. We get asked a lot about our, our asphalt plant, and if it's worth it.
Making blacktop?
Making blacktop as opposed to buying it, I think is like a $70,000 difference, or actually, I'm under wrong price there, it's a $60,000 difference. If we was to buy it instead of make it, we would spend $60,000 more. And so people ask about that, and they're like, well, why don't you buy it? And $60,000 is not the big savings. The big savings is where, when we put it down ourselves. I figured it up, the, everything we did, what it would cost to contract out, what we did this year, and we only did half as much as what we plan on doing in a, in a full year. We basically took care of 5 mile of road, and we want to take care of 10 mile of road. So in the 5 mile of road that we took care of, we saved the county $300,000 by putting that asphalt down in probably a month and a half. I think our average, our average payroll for everybody at the county highways, $60,000, $50,000, $60,000 a month. So if we had have did everything we planned on doing, then we would have probably saved the county $600,000 by laying that asphalt ourselves. And...
There's also an issue where you go to lay asphalt, if you're not doing it yourself, you may not be able to get the asphalt when you want it.
Correct, yeah.
So...
And the...
...with efficiencies as well.
So when we buy asphalt for like our CCMG projects, that's, it's laid for us, is that the same recipe to asphalt that we, we ask for the same specs that you guys blend?
No, we, we, they, they're going to put down the state mix, but they bid it out.
But that, you don't have that number in there to figure out? We, we build an asphalt mixture that's long-term, you've got more flexibility in there, you know, it's building the asphalt.
Yeah, it's a...
Maintenance down the road too, so that number's not even in there?
No, it's, it's not. But the, the state mix has got a 5.8 percent binder content in it, and the county's got our own design, it's just got a 6.3 percent binder content in it. So when you see the, the rejuvenating thing that we do on there, basically every road that we CCMG out, that we have a contractor come in and pave, we turn around the following year and put the rejuvenation oil back into it.
To get the flexibility.
Which helps fills the voids and keeps the plasticity of the, of the asphalt, because it's, it's not the same comparison that we can't, we can't spec out.
I know that, but I'm saying that's a savings to the county for, by us laying our own asphalt and making our own mixture.
Yes.
Prolonging the life of that road, down the road. So there is a number there somewhere, right?
Yeah. I've, I've actually, I've figured that number on what it would cost us to make it at 5.8 if we took our binder down to 5.8 instead of 6.3. That's the biggest cost of your asphalt, and the binder is the oil, and the oil is what they keep wanting to take out of asphalt and put it back in later. It don't make sense, but that's, that's the world we live in as far as that goes. So that was just something to present. I will update that. There's a lot more information and statistics I didn't go over, but I didn't want to bore you guys to death. There's only 19 pages there.
Now, this is incredible. That's good. Thank you. Great job.
Also on the project updates, I guess we talked about the, usually we come up with our five-year plan, and each, we've got a plan of roads. We tackled basically 14 mile of them last year. And we did, I should have brought a list that's showing you guys some of the roads that we did, which we've, we've all talked about, but we did tackle a lot of roads up north. Michael, you're, you're welcome, as in your, in your district. But, you know, and some of that comes, comes to, about with the microchip processing plant going up in the northeastern part of the, the county, and, you know, Odin's probably the second largest city or town that we have here, and they're growing, so we did hit a lot of them northern roads this year and tiled them. They're just tiled roads now, but the tiled road makes it one step closer to becoming a hard surface road. But 900 East, we talked about last meeting, I just wanted to, we don't have the whole plan, I can't give that to you guys unless I got my computer and show you all the roads on the list. We don't have to okay all the roads on the list today, but maybe to get a consensus from you guys, if that's something we want to start moving towards as a, as a vote that we want to do. We don't have to commit to doing the whole thing now, or a mile of it, or two miles, but so it doesn't slow us down when I've got crews ready. There, there's shoulder and stuff that needs to be done, and grader work needs to be done, and stuff needs to get prepped. And the earlier we get the yes, the earlier we can start doing it. And now to make it happen this summer, some of it. I don't know if you guys have an okay, if you want to give, give the Highway Department the okay to, to proceed with 900 East.
Yeah, I'm open to open new corridors. That whole corridor down there, it needs to be opened up. That way we'll have a connectivity from one end of the county to the other too, so, yeah, I would like to move forward with it.
I, I still have to be convinced, I think it's good to open it up, but we've got north-south corridors being the main highways, so accessibility to those are a priority to me, but I agree, we need to open up areas that can accommodate housing.
Housing, yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, I, obviously, this is my district, it's not a road that I drive upon, or probably won't drive on even after it's hard surface, so there's no personal benefit. But obviously, that's, it's the most sparsest area we have in the county as far as that goes, and that's because it was mined. And with the school districts and North Davies, Bar Ave, obviously Washington's good too, so, yeah, I think, I think it needs to be opened up. I think that the plan will fall into place as you guys get in there. So I'm not saying start at 100 South and work to 700, 700 South, I'm just saying, let's open that corridor up. Let's make sure we have enough revenue for other projects. I know the council seems to be fairly engaged on this particular project, open up the southern part of the county, because it is a countywide program, and all 10 townships have had significant road improvements, which is one. So, yeah, I think you set the direction based off what you think's the most efficient way to upgrade that corridor, and then evaluated from a cost perspective, and just advise us at those different phases. But, yeah, I'd like to see you go full steam ahead.
Yeah, the, you know, some of the work that needs to be done before we could tile it, just south of Old 50, there's a, a bag in the road that needs to be built up for sight view. And I was trying to work a deal out with the coal mine when they come to reclaim 700 East, and they've got a bunch of rock and dirt that they need to move and get rid of. So this, that's why I'm saying, the sooner I know, then I could work a deal out with them to get rid of that six-way crossing at 800 East and Old 50, and use some of that material to fill that bag up in that road.
Yeah.
Because it, it needs to be filled up three or four feet.
It sounds like you've got the support and go and move forward, and just keep us advised and step in the way, so.
Yeah, and then as Ron touched on, we've been talking about some other roads too, which will present the whole list of roads. There's, there's roads that's got more housing on it, and we, we need to take care of them, and we are going to take care of them.
Oh, sure.
But also, like you touched on, that's the biggest area of the county, 24 square miles that has no blacktop road in it. Had it not been mined, it'd probably been blacktopped.
What is important to note too, just based off this data, I mean, there's 20 roads that's going to be touched next year, so it's not going to be just 900 East going south.
Right.
It's going to be one of many, so that's why you just have to have that balancing act to make sure that you manage all the roads in the county.
Like 900 East, just like the northern part, it was all in phases, right? It didn't happen overnight, so it might be another 10-year project to get it done, 20-year project, or whatever it takes to get it done.
Or three.
Yeah, I don't want to go 10 years. And, and that's utilizing some of the funds that we have, and I haven't talked to Jen yet about the, you know, what's all committed out of our, our projects, you know, road construction project fund and everything. I've been meaning to do that, but we'll have to do that, and then also get the council involved, like you touched on too, they, they seem supportive, we'll just have to find out how supportive, right?
Right.
Sounds good.
And the REO update, are you, you've got that?
I think we're good there. So we've been, we have a timeline on that 200 North.
Right.
I did direct drive out there yesterday, and they're, they're in the middle of the road now, so everything's moved, utilities are moved, so our, our goal is to get them through that road and get that road service put back, you know, this time next year, and everything will be good, so.
Hopefully, they keep moving forward and get through it sooner than later, and then can, like I said, get a ramp put back so they get the road open again. There will be a cross, there will be a crossing on that road for a while with the mine traffic, but at least the road will be open, hopefully, yeah.
Good.
Hey, that's all I've got. Has anybody got any questions?
I'd just like to state, over the years, we've been blessed with highway supervisors, being Larry Macklin, Phil Cornelius, that I'm familiar with. They've done a great job, and I think Chris has hit the ground running, has taken what he's learned from them and elevated it. So we've been very blessed in the county, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Great job. Okay, next up, we got the tax sale public hearing for Ride Solutions. I believe we got a couple ladies joining us. So this is a step in the process of a lot, next to Ride Solutions on Main Street.
Good morning.
Good morning. The commissioners agreed to go ahead and start the process of deeding that lot over to Ride Solutions. So this is the public hearing. We've done the notice to the public, and now we have to conduct a public hearing to decide to assign a particular nonprofit, and then pass the resolution, and then that will start the next step. So Debbie, Becky, did I miss anything there?
Nope, sounds good.
So we'll go ahead and open up the public meeting for the assignment of the property. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the current property in any manner? Any opposition? Commissioners, any questions, any feedback that you've received?
I haven't received anything.
All right, hearing done. We'll go ahead and close the public portion. Commissioners, or any updates that you ladies have for the commissioners? If not, then...
I haven't heard anything.
I entertain a motion to approve the resolution to move forward. This will then trigger 120-day redemption period for the current property owner, and then after that period, then the next steps will happen, so. Entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the property.
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
It is only, it's only 120 days, Nathan?
120 days.
Okay.
The nonprofit has to take the ball from here. So the title search, noticing, all that happy stuff you guys got. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lon.
Government Center Emergency Response Exit Plan.
The year-end report.
Year-end report first.
Year-end report, oh, I'm sorry. Sit back down, Scott. The other guy's got a gun.
The other guy's got a gun.
Gary, I'm sorry, I looked right over it. The annual year-end report from the Sheriff's Department, sorry, Scott.
I think I got it to you. We transported people 40,500 miles last year. Our calls were about the same, some were up, some were...
I won't ask questions on every bullet point, but why are prisoners transported so many?
Well, we got to take them to doctor's appointments, right? We're constantly got someone going to doctor's...
Like the long miles, I mean, Texas, Alabama?
Superior Court. We've been to Florida because Judge Smith ordered us to go pick up a couple runaway juveniles, you know? And we do have to go pick people up out of state and all throughout the state if they're arrested in their fall within our extradition limits. in uh, their fall within our extradition limits. And then transports to and from Department of Corrections back to here. We get orders to uh, transport inmates from Indiana Department of Corrections to Community Corrections. We've always got three or four cars on the road all the time.
Anything we can do to trim that down?
Uh, we'll see what Judge Murray's going to do.
Okay.
I think that helps some. We still have some backlog to get through special judges.
Cause you're sending two deputies out.
Not every time.
Oh, not every time.
Most of the time I'll send a deputy and a jailer uh, on the long ones like Michigan City.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And then uh, we investigated four hundred eighty-five crashes, four hundred eighty-five crashes. Had four fatalities that we worked. Uh, we served uh, two thousand three hundred six sets of civil papers. And processed ten sheriff sales. So that was up from last year. We booked in one thousand fifty-nine people last year, twenty twenty-three. That's down a little bit. Uh, our average daily population is a hundred and fifty. So. Twenty twenty-three, it was up. Twenty twenty-two, we had them a forty-three days, eight hour average. Now we got them forty-seven hours or forty-seven days, eight hours. Population, age groups, marital statuses, felony arrests, misdemeanor arrests. Well, we had no fatalities, no escapes. We served one hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven meals. And at the date of this report, we had thirty-four community corrections inmates that I have to take care of. Uh, we have, you know, preachers and different religious folks coming into the jail throughout the year. Uh, prayer's still going quite strong. Iraqs is still doing their thing. Uh, we have several different ways of uh, conducting visitation. Their sheriff's office was leaning tight, calls different things. I don't know why that's in there twice. Our road crew, there's a list of what our road crew does. Uh, they've been helping with the courthouse relocation right now.
They've been incredible.
Yeah, and then of course I got a female crew too that goes out to the animal shelter quite a bit. And they do work in, up in Odin and, and different locations throughout the county. They're a, they're a big asset to these, to that, does that. We didn't hold a lot last year for other counties. We had uh, three hundred and fifty-eight disciplinary hearings in twenty twenty-three. It's almost one a day. So you can imagine it's one a day that we're having an issue with somebody over there. Hmm, we switched uh, in twenty, this year we got Reevolver part-time because we couldn't keep them filled. So we got two full-time positions. So we're hoping that'll work out a little bit better. Are, are having trouble getting those positions filled. So uh, it's a lack of uh, and the last one said he smoked marijuana on Christmas Eve. So I'm like, well, you know, come back another day. Uh. We maintained our, maintained our uh, heating and air conditioning. Mark Bledsoe's retiring February second. So we'll be, we started the new process for a, a new deputy on there. I think he'd still be with us. He's been with us since nineteen ninety-nine and I've been a deputy since two thousand. Uh, he, he would still be with us had he not had his health uh, take a dive on again. He decided that uh, best thing for him to do was health issues.
As far as capacity, occupancy, I mean, you still have plenty of, plenty of room over there and we were not ruining the jail.
Right. The, most of you wouldn't realize that whatever a jail's eighty percent capacity, it's full. Because you gotta be able to classify people. You can't put certain people with certain people and then you got co-defendants you can't put with people. And uh, we, we're able to manage that fairly well.
For the foreseeable future? Good. Yeah, people don't know what goes on.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Great job.
Yeah, it's uh, I, I don't know. Has Julie gave you her numbers yet? She, she took over a hundred and something like a hundred and twenty thousand. That's crazy.
For dispatch.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So we're, we're always busy.
We're not housing nearly the prisoners we used to from other counties. Is that because they've upgraded their facilities?
They've upgraded their facilities, yeah. Sullivan County's uh, opened their new jail. We could hold Vanderburg all day long if I had the space. Vanderburg built their jail too small.
Years ago when it was built, that was one of the selling points that they would be housing prisoners from other counties and it looks like.
And, and the state, now the state. See, most people don't realize, I get my DOC report. When I first become sheriff, uh, Davies County had two hundred inmates at the Department of Corrections. And last month we had sixty-eight. So uh, Judge Sabeck has rotated all these people to community corrections programs. Now that's a statewide trend because the Department of Corrections down three thousand beds. They got three thousand empty beds. But yet we can't seem to get our people moved up there. It's um, the problem faced throughout the.
And we still keep level six here?
In certain circumstances, yeah.
But sometimes they go.
Sometimes they go. Uh, but when we do hold them, we, we charge the state thirty-seven fifty a day.
They don't have to pay the minimum or?
That is the minimum.
I thought it went to fifty.
I wish. That's one of those state tricks, you know, where they say you do it to, we'll, we'll increase it to two hundred, two dollars and fifty cents this year and two fifty the next year and then the next year never seems to happen.
County to county increase, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Enough for.
Well. The state pays us and other counties will pay us as well.
The counties pay us a higher rate.
Counties pay the same rate.
As the state.
Yeah, now federal, federal is different, but I, they do a lot of uh, cause when you hold federal inmates, you're responsible to transport them to court, Indianapolis, Terre Haute, and Evansville. Knox County's doing it. They seem to love it. Clay County does it. They seem to love it. It's not something I, it's not a business I want to get into. I spend enough time driving around the state.
Looks like it.
I know it too. Yeah.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for the sheriff? All right, great job.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Gary.
Great. Next up now, we got the government center emergency response exit plan.
Morning, Scott.
So this is for the uh, annex, for the government center here with everyone coming over. It's just an updated exit plan um, for emergencies. So.
Yeah, it's all just, it's an updated plan and exit plan for this building and since we have new people in the building, Jennifer wanted to make sure we were updated on that.
Sounds good. Any questions, discussions?
Questions. Looks very thorough.
It does. It looks really good. So that entertained a motion to approve.
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
At courthouse renovation contracts. Yeah, I hear we're doing a project across the square. So these are all, I'm gonna keep these actually.
These are all the prime contracts, I guess.
I'll keep these all bundled. Um, so these, these are all contingent as far as the bond document coming through February first. I think that's when the funds should be finalized. Uh, council's made a decision on that. So got uh, the four contracts here. Um, Steve Miller, um, Ice, or Steve from Ice Miller.
Yeah.
Um, last name's escaping me. And Grant and Garmont. And everyone's looked over these by all means. You guys want to throw them one final time, but they need to be officially approved by the commissioners, but.
Yeah.
They call the steps.
Garmont has reviewed and approved.
Yeah, Garmont has and um, what was Steve's? It seemed like Steve Miller.
Sounds like Jones or.
Steve Jones. Yeah, Steve Jones from Ice Miller. Okay. So we'll go ahead and entertain them all at the same time with guys who would like. Uh, Tabor Owens, Mel K Electric, Austok Hoffman Plumbing and Guyer Fire Protection.
Yeah. I don't have an issue with any of them and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes three zero. It is official.
Moving forward now.
Get your hammers out. Okay, next up, we got the farm leases. Uh, Grant's not here, so um, I'll go ahead and maybe with Jen's assistance, I don't know. Since she, since she made eye contact. I got four leases here and um, what we typically do is open them, give them under review. So they are all sealed. Um, don't remember farm lease one, two, and three, but we'll, who is who, but we'll figure this out. They, uh, farm lease number one, and we got from Keith Graber and Sons. Oh, yeah, he's got his little fancy, little fancy thing there. Got the bond check here. This is for Flat Creek Farms. So this is for the thirty-three to thirty-four acres. Bar Township. I'm assuming this is the um.
Highway Department.
Highway Department in the amount of six thousand four hundred and five dollars. And they have their uh, affidavit concerning employment of unauthorized aliens. They have their check. Grant's review. The rest of that, that's received. Also from the same farm. Farm lease number two from Graber and Sons, Flat Creek. Got that check attached. Everything's signed. This is for the forty point seven acres. Um, this is either out by the county farm or airport. Three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
Was it three thousand what?
Two hundred and twenty dollars for the forty point seven acres.
I think this is still also at the highway department.
Was the same person.
What's that?
It's the same.
I know there's a pastor out there and then there's.
Oh, okay. It does say, yeah, I guess everything's in bar out there. But okay, this could be at the highway department. And that's where we'll, we'll evaluate all that. Um, does he, yeah, there are two tracks out there. Yeah. Cause we don't own that much up there. Okay, next up for farm lease number three, Keith Graber and Sons. Checks attached. This is for the one hundred and thirteen acres, Washington Township. Um, thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, the ten percent is attached. Everything is signed. Got the affidavit. That's the farm lease number three.
That's the same, same.
Same farm, yeah, Flat Creek. Keith Graber and Sons.
I guess the county's still going to take on that, those acres at the airport thing.
Well, that'll be the discussion. We'll open this up. I've walked there, open this up. We'll discuss. Probably want to deal with that, deal with that. So this is says county farm rent for membering farms. Get the check. Check is attached. Um, it's for the hundred and thirteen acres. It's in the amount of thirty-two thousand fifty dollars. We do have the affidavit for unauthorized aliens as well. So that's included. So those are all received. So um, historically, the highway department seems to be the easier one because it's, it's pastor and so forth and the um, airport, we've done some land transfers and stuff. So I guess let me do this first. Let me take that motion, go ahead and, and take these under advisement.
Right.
And so I'd entertain that motion.
Yeah, still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes three zero. So regarding the airport.
Yeah, we need to, you know, I, I probably don't, I know we had a short timeframe there to get that done. We really need to move that on to the aviation board and, and even let them take whatever the county still owns out there. Let them maintain and run those contracts, I would think. But does it still need to go through the county board of commissioners? I guess that's the next question.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking of one of those same routes where if we can use them as our advisory body and say, look, here's a, here's a legal bid. They got all the documentations. Um, airport aviation board, evaluate these and see what the pros and cons in it is for your conducive use. And then have the airport board report back to us their thoughts.
Yeah.
Some, somehow we need it involved.
Two questions. Hire them to manage it and then the income from that comes back to county, not the airport. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's somehow have them involved in the process.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
You know, we don't want tractors on the runways and this and that.
And they've got to have a say so somewhere. Yeah.
We have an agreement that they manage that property for us and then the part of that agreement is that the money paid just flows through to where it's currently going.
So what we'll do from here, uh, as Grant reviews those, uh, he and I can reach out to Erica at the airport and then evaluate those particular bids. And uh, we'll just kind of do a dry run and then we'll see what, we'll, we'll come back with their possible options of what their involvement could be.
Okay.
Um, so we'll go and get that started.
Yeah, we could just have a discussion next meeting and then approve those and after that.
Yeah, I think so too, because I mean, we, we're not out there. We don't physically see it. So I mean, it'd be nice to have them be the boots on the ground.
Right.
Okay, next up is the grant modification letter for a housing project. So this is a letter that just needs to be signed. Um, this is the uh, the A, the AMI. Um, I forget what the acronym stands for, but just an updated letter. There's so many acronyms in here. The Davies County O O R project provided ten housing units with rehab assistance. The AMI levels of the ten units are, are as follows. And then these come from the IHCDACDBG funds. It's like someone didn't use any vows.
This is all through SIDC.
It's all through SIDC. So this is now one of those rubber stamping ones.
Yeah.
Not that it matters, but yeah, so any.
I don't have any issue with it. I'll make a motion to approve.
With this acronym letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Making a motion.
So even, even SIDC's an acronym, so.
I'm gonna leave the vows out of my name. Is there a motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes three zero. Right. Um, oh, this is the Westgate resolution. Okay, so good. It made it to this board meeting. This is what we discussed earlier. I thought it was going to be on the next board meeting, but this, uh.
For RDC, out of RDC.
Out of RDC. This is RDC uh, reviewed the build operate transfer. Um, and it's actually build transfer is kind of how they do it. Uh, it's just another tool in our belt that the county can decide to use on any project in the county. We don't have to use it, but we have to adopt this resolution in order to be able to use it. So um, if there's no other questions, um, is there in a motion to approve that build operate transfer resolution?
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. That's all right. Uh, motion, or all in favor?
Aye.
My motion passes three zero. That was a quick turnaround. All right, what happened here? Oh. Yeah, they're clipped together. It's like, honey, that's Ride Solutions. That's that one. They're clipped together. It's like, honey, that's right, so that's that one. I don't know if that would need to sign yet or not, but there's a noteworthy section on the back. You saw me sign it. I'm bidding.
One right above your head.
Okay, courthouse renovation update.
It's getting close.
Last chance to back out. So we have a meeting after this, a meeting over at the courthouse to talk about some office placements. I met with, uh, DeRon and I met with, um, some of the department, or Gormong and Hudson. That was after the last.
Hudson was afterwards, but we did meet about, uh, all the fixtures that are gonna be thrown away.
Yes.
How to handle that, and basically I think what we decided, talked about is clearly not us, up to us, it's up to the people that have the contract on the courthouse, and they work with the department heads for, for plus.
Yeah, that's right. Once this, once we sign those contracts, like the contractors sort of have jurisdiction to some degree. So we're gonna work through those contractors as far as removing the stuff that we're just gonna take to the landfill. And so it's, it'll be kind of a clunky process, but it's better than not giving department heads access at all.
Right.
Because there could be a few things over there, but as far as opening up to the mass public, if we can thread that needle, they will try. But that's not gonna be something that we can sit here and say, we got this well-oiled process to allow public to come, when these contractors are in there working.
And at the end of the day, it'll be up to the contractors. They know our wishes on what we'd like to see done, but they're the ones that have control of it.
It's just during that meeting, actually, we just, I think we did, we decided that it was that same day that we can use pews in the courtroom instead of chairs. That's saved ten, twenty thousand dollars just is either in the courtrooms or in the courtroom, in lieu of the chairs, so.
What was the total contract on the furnishings for that, cause it's been cut substantially?
It was three seventy-five when was when we started that meeting, but I think we're.
Down to three, I think.
Down to three, I think, cause chairs alone was a hundred thousand.
No, yeah, good.
Chairs. And we're gonna try to electrify the tables, do the electric drops, and, you know, rather have it and not get it and then get it and not have that thing, so that's fifteen hundred bucks a table. Little odds and ends stuff, but, uh, so we're, we're moving along, uh, moving along there. I think the courts are moving this week, and Clark, you're all settled in? How is it? Is it?
It's really down there.
Really? That's great. I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah.
Any, any update on your shelving?
Yeah, right, okay. Well, this is what's great about it, everyone just cooperating and working together. It sounds, some of these decisions, we, we don't, we'll make them if we have to, but God forbid, we, three of us have to make some of these decisions. We'll make some, we'll make them. But you guys are handling almost all of us, so thank you for that. All right, anything else from the commissioners? Anything from the audience? Tony, you got anything? Nope, guess not.
Blah, my.
Just January, too. You guys got a whole year. So, okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Okay, motion, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.